Continuing to. We are continuing to mow and patch. We're trying to maintain three fifty west. Okay, because of this railroad project. We've been out there a couple of times to work on that road. They've accidentally tore it up. I'm still, I've talked to the railroad traffic control. I've talked to Endot. And we still continue to dig in on that. I want to see who's going to be responsible for the repair. We actually had. We redid our community crossing grant and put that road in there for 2023. Just in case if we don't get any kind of funding for that. So we've got an action in play to try to. We're playing. We just finished up on fifty fifty south and eleven hundred west. We have to put in a couple of pipes out there. Drainage issue. We're done down there for the winter, but the road is open. It's a dead end road. Trees down for line of sight at the park. I'm sure everybody's seen that. We're done on bridge seventy three for the year. That road's still closed, open to the locals that live there. Still got some alignment to do on the road, but the bridge is complete. We got the siren down at the park. Four eighty east and five hundred south. We did a race improvement and also a drainage issue across the road on four eighty. We pretty much completed that. Did some ditch work on three hundred south, rest of four twenty one. There was a problem down there, so we did a little bit of ditch work down there. And right now at this time, which according to the weather, looks like we might get a little bit of snow this weekend. And I am full of salt and of sand. So we're ready for that. I think we're going to put the V beds in some of the trucks, get them ready and set up this week, and also put supplies on. So we'll be ready once the, if it does hit. Hopefully with Mark going out, we don't get a whole bunch, because I'd hate for him to get snowed in.
Know your number.
Hello, Matt, that's all I got. You gentlemen, have anything to say?
Yeah, in your conversations with railroad, are they aware of what the cause is?
Yes, I called, I called the railroad traffic control. Okay, got her number and called and she said, well, you know, Endot approved an official detour. Okay, which is take them to nine all the way to seventy four. Well, I told her, I said, the only problem is nobody's using that. Nobody's using it at all. Okay, they're going to come the quickest way they can, try and get around. And she said, well, you know, Endot approved that. But she gave me a number for a guy of Endot that approved that. So that's kind of where I've got. I talked to their signage people. She gave me a number for a gentleman. He called me and he just wanted to know what the issue was. I said, well, if you just sit right down there at State Road three, all right, and you watch, you'll see exactly where everybody's going. And they're going on three fifty west or five fifty or four fifty, however they can get around and return heck out of the road. So I haven't finished digging into that, but according to her, Endot approved that official detour. But I don't know why they didn't do a two lane passenger. I think it's because it's just a short project. But I haven't, I haven't dug in that for to find that information out. We'll report back when I do find that out. Watch it out.
You had one comment on that. Originally, they were not supposed to close both lanes directions at the same time. That was Endot, and that's something you want to voice to Endot was the agreement was they were going to close one side at a time. But we came in that Monday or Tuesday morning and all of a sudden they've got both lanes closed and people are running everywhere. So that's, that's where the disaster started.
Well, stay on top of that. Thanks, guys. Krista?
I don't have anything for you today.
Kenny?
Good morning. There's no storm. Since I was meeting, I had twenty eight building inspections, eight new building permits and plan reviews. We had the three red tags, one for building without a permit. Property owner came in the same day and got his permit. The second was for basement stairway clearance. It's supposed to be six foot eight. The builder corrected the problem and a certificate of occupancy was issued. The third was for a set of steps going to the second floor, not to code for clearance height of six eight. The builder was informed. I received a follow up call for a nuisance property. And I told them that the letter was drafted and sent on December fifth. Then last week, the letter was returned to us. Wrong address, so we resent to the proper address. And then last week, I started inspections on the new highway garage. They have been waiting for concrete anchors to arrive. Finally got them, so I think they plan on doing it. There's almost every day in weather for me. That's all I've got.
Thanks. Last question for Kenny.
Yep.
Mr. Rick Knobby.
Morning, everybody. Wanted to ask you on the agenda, be on the agenda. You guys have a tractor and a mower that you're getting ready to dispose of at the highway garage, I'm told. And I just was going to ask if you would consider, if you recall, some years ago, on a weak moment on my part, I told you, Miller, that I would try to help take care of the old landfill. That might be a good thing to have, to help keep it mowed up, help get rid of some brush that's growing up. As I damn inspects that every year, they did comment about getting rid of some brush and things like that. And Mark and I walked around out there last year once. So I would ask that you consider that in some form or fashion in lieu of perhaps selling that at this point. So just putting that on your radar. I don't think you've got it advertised yet for sale or anything like that. So just want to make you aware of that. And then if I might, I attended the R E M C's broadband, broadband meetings last week, I think it was Monday. And in that meeting, they talked about a project that they're looking into to put fiber throughout their service area and going through all of their substations and then branching off from there to provide high speed internet service to their service area and Decatur County. After that meeting, I thought a little bit about it and I, you know, we've been talking about broadband for probably five or six years in some fashion. The number was brought out that it was going to cost about forty two million dollars to install this fiber across the community. And I think what, what the holdup is on the R E M C side of it is that their board members are, just want to do their due diligence, make sure that it's got a good business case to do this, that it won't put electrical losses in jeopardy as far as spending that kind of money. I just asked the commissioners and I'd asked the council to, to consider, I think we're going to try to put together, I met with Fred of Planet last week and I met with Mayor Marsh last week, and had asked about putting together a committee that would have several stakeholders from the community, member of council, commissioner member, hospital, Greensboro schools, county schools, you know, maybe seven to nine members that could get together and kind of help this process along. Because I think from what I've been able to find out, it might take a mix of wireless and wire type of stuff to go. But perhaps with all these grants coming up, meat grants and OKR grants that we could help with maybe some funding of some of that. I think it would provide benefit to the community as a whole. I'm sure you guys would agree at some level on that. And then Krista, and you guys had signed a broadband ready community agreement ordinance some months ago. That actually was turned down at the state because there was verbiage changes in it that area plan had requested, and the state didn't like that. So Brian Robinson and I have been working a little bit with Ernie Hawthorne from the state to redo that verbiage to get that going. So we'll probably come back to an area plan meeting in the future and a commissioners meeting in the future to readdress that so we can be a broadband ready community. Currently, there's seventy five counties or communities across the state of Indiana that are broadband ready. And then that allows for providers to come in. And I think as you do these grants, that'll be a box that people look at as they check those off. And then I think it's on W T R E as well. But if you don't know about it, check it out. Check with the local R E M C. By January thirteenth, the federal government has a broadband map that is broadband dot F C C dot org, I think it is. And you can go online and update your actual service speed of the internet service that you provide. And currently, Decatur County is what I believe to be misrepresented in that to a great degree, that while it says you have service on the map, when you actually update that map, it'll kick you back to an underserved or no serve status. And I think that'll go a long way in helping, whether it's R E M C or whoever it is, going after these grants, the opportunity to get that. And then lastly, when I talked to the mayor, I had asked him to keep in mind the City Park Lake dam project. I understand you guys are working pretty hard on Park Road upgrades and all that kind of stuff. And I think there might be a ready grant coming up, another round of that. And then just ask you to keep that in mind as we're along. Mark, if you could, just let me know on that mower, which plan, which plan is on that.
We'll talk about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Dr. Howe, I've got you up here next.
Good morning, Board Member.
Thank you. Months or so ago, Chuck gave me what you guys had as where the status of Health Department Board was of those membership, the one they were going to expire. That was a little different from what we were working on. And so I went back and I provided it, provided it with a copy of where I think we are and how the boards are set up. These terms are about. And the people right now that need to be either replaced or reappointed is Nick Peterson, TJ, Brian. But TJ went on July, replaced Alice Herdemex, when she had resigned. Nick has been on. My recommendation would be to reappoint both of those individuals.
I'll move to approve.
I would second that.
I concur. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howe. One quick question. At the bottom, you've got Mary McCullough expires on twelve thirty one twenty two. Looked like she started one one twenty two. Should that be twenty fourth?
Yes.
Actually, it should be twenty five. It'd be twenty five.
Okay.
Okay, while we're on board appointments, we'll just run through here. The animal control, that's still.
Official point.
No, we have gone. And that was to be, Janet Mailer. See, I asked and she agreed to serve on that.
Move to approve. I think with the knowledge that I have, I. May not second that.
I would second that for Janet. Since I initiated that.
Having said that, I certainly want to thank Krista for her service on that board. She's been a very good member for many years.
Area plan is the next. Paul Stone has agreed to serve another term, so I would move to approve that.
I'm sorry, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Yes, I will.
Gary Fisher last week, last meeting.
That, that was next year. That was, that was a bad date.
Okay.
Lake Sam T Regional Water. Tom DePalma, Club Life State. I would move to reappoint each.
I would second those.
Public Defender Board. We have Drew Young, and I have not spoken to Drew.
I have not either.
So we may want to table that until we can reach out to him. Tourism Board. I would move that we appoint Stephanie Owen in Daniel Fayette's place.
Chuck Daniels' term is out of this year.
It's not?
No. I know there was some confusion about that, but I went back and looked up our record. Season odd here. Darren Covington's, whose commission appointment is up this year, but it's not.
Okay.
And Stephanie's actually already appointed to the board by the board, by the council.
By the council, but I thought that the deal was we were going to take that appointment. They had someone else they were going to put in there.
Okay, well, I know that had been discussed. I didn't know if that was official.
You're saying Daniel Daniels is the twenty third or two thousand twenty three?
Yeah. And I mean, I have some confirmation. He replaced Phil Smith, who was on a pod year cycle, it's a two year term.
Okay.
Maybe just stay with us with Darren.
Yep. I'll move to approve.
Reappoint Darren.
Yep.
I'm saying.
That's the only one I've talked about.
Redevelopment Commission. I've spoken with all three, which is Brian Keith, Chris Bauer, and Don Shillit. I would reappoint all three.
Second.
Paul, I doubt. Do you have one?
It wasn't in that delegate, but the corrections board, there's actually, I believe, three or four, actually. I have to write that one one picture. All, all commissioner appointments. Mark Boykins. And I've not talked to Mark. But I don't know if you want to make the appointment contention. His exceptions.
I would assume so. I don't, I don't know.
I don't either.
Community correct?
Community correct.
No, it's, what's? What that one's doing? Also, Nick Walke and Despreet Gill. Appointments are both up this year. Nick, I believe, was interested in serving. So I would appoint Nick. I would move to appoint Nick.
Is that it?
And he's a county council member. And I would move to appoint Ashley Hungate to that.
Okay, we have, next I have up the change order for the water main seed.
Yep.
Thanks, Mark. The water main project out at Park Road and two hundred west progressing pretty quickly. We have had a couple of changes on that project. They've included having to extend the casing under the widened part of two hundred west. We have some water main now due to the shifting of the cul-de-sac at the south end of two hundred west. Now that's under the cul-de-sac where it was out in open field, so there's some extra costs associated with that. And then there was a like twenty foot wide driveway that needs an asphalt patch out the back over the asphalt, but the, put the pipe through there. There, there are some additions and some subtractions from the project, but the net value of the change order is an add of fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars. So that would take the total cost of the project from three hundred seventy one thousand three nineteen to three eighty six, six nineteen. We request your approval of that to keep Omera going out there to get that project complete.
Question?
Question for the.
I'd second it.
Yes, sir, I'll take that. Mark, if you will, I'm here that amendment one, your services contract, can be served. Also, for the commissioners' consideration this morning, for the highway garage project, we've had a couple of changes in services out there since we signed our contract, what, probably about ten months ago at this point. One of those came from the property swap for the right of way for two hundred west bags. Going through the planning process, the APCs requested that we provide a survey of Beggs' property in addition to the survey that we had done on the highway garage site in order to make that swap. That's been one change. And the other one is that the, when we first put our agreement together at the end of the design process, we had estimated a twelve month construction cycle. When we got the construction schedule from the contractor, their construction schedule's going to go fourteen months. So that adds a couple of extra months of services from, from our perspective. So we're requesting from the commissioners a, a change in our contract price in addition of fourteen thousand dollars for the two extra months of construction services and then also the additional survey of the Beggs property to cover those costs. So we appreciate your consideration of that.
Is that the redevelopment contribution?
Of that? Be included?
They've not approved anything more than our original contract, and we could certainly approach the R D C about them covering that cost. We'd certainly willing to do that.
I mean, I'm good with what's going to happen.
Yeah.
Right.
So you're going to make that?
I would move to approve this decision.
I would second. So I have to say, thank you.
We also have concerning the highway department payout number three. I don't have it in print because our printers are down, our servers down for, it's for hundred seventy six thousand, nine hundred and ninety five dollars and twenty six cents to be presented to redevelopment. Maybe Wednesday. You have to be Wednesday. Approved by commissioners to send it on.
Okay, approve.
Just a second. I believe we have a contract to sign for the sale of the jailpods, which is to happen upon closing in December thirtieth. They put down a twenty five thousand dollar payment, to which we deducted from the one million dollar sale price, nine hundred seventy five thousand dollars. If, in fact, that does not happen by December thirtieth, they agreed to put down another twenty five thousand dollars to extend it thirty days, in which at thirty days, if the money is not transferred to the Decatur County Treasurer's Office, that entire fifty thousand dollars will be forfeited. So we need to approve this and have me sign it, get it back to their attorneys.
I'd move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chad, for your work on that.
Also have on this center point invoice, Janet, I don't.
It should be center stone?
Or center stone, I'm sorry.
Well, you did not approve the claim back in July. They have since sent another invoice for the last six months of two thousand twenty two, so I don't know what to do. Do you want me to encumber that money or are you still not going to pay it?
Well, in my opinion, not to pay it.
I just need a direction so that, because that, that money is just kind of holding. But if you say, you don't tell us how to pay it, then later go back with the cash.
If, if we indeed owe this money at some point, and you encumbered it, does that obligate us to pay that next year or does this still go through the claim process?
It still has to go through the claim process because they did not approve it. They just tabled it. Or you just tabled it, I'm sorry, not that.
Your thoughts?
I think it's probably wise that we encumber it until we get it resolved, but I agree with, with Mark, until we've got some kind of indication of the services provided, we should not pay it. But if we don't encumber it and we do come to the point that we, we feel it's got to be paid, does that put us in the bind? I mean, would we be better?
You just have to go through the additional process through the council.
Right.
Because if it goes back to cash, it's.
I'm the lawyer. That's what I would do. To encumber it, right, Jim? What I'd do with it. To encumber it, get some answers from it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one of my questions, and I think Chuck, you explained it also.
We can always go back in the council, revisit it as far as that goes if we need to.
It is budgeted for next year. Twenty twenty three, it's budgeted still.
We're going to build spot a month in twenty three, correct?
I don't know.
This was an email I got. Eighteen nineteen thousand, Mark.
So, motion to encumber? So moved.
I'll say.
It's encumbered. Next order of business I have here is elect president and commissioner for two thousand and twenty. Next order of business I have here is elect president commissioner for two thousand and twenty-three. The volunteers.
I choose, to choose for me, guys. I move to elect Mark Fifty with acceptance.
I would wholeheartedly second that.
I would. I would, uh, be honored to do that one more year. Been a pleasure. Sometimes. Thank you, guys. Uh, now I have, is there anything else from the audience?
I do. Todd right now is at intern status. I don't know if you meet again before the end of the year, but you need to clarify that you value that status unless it's what it came to say.
Do you feel that he's?
That's a little questionable, but. I've done very well, very well.
I guess not as easily as Mark.
I've got my number, I said I was well to help him if he needed help, too, so.
I would move to put Todd in as, uh, permanent director of, uh, supervisor.
I would second that motion.
I would concur, congratulations.
Very welcome, Maho.
Got a fine job so far.
Some days.
You had something?
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment, I'm Julie Gullier, I'm with Indiana Farm Bureau in Popra, and I'm the regional manager for this area. I wanted to introduce myself, and I also, um, wanted to reiterate what the gentleman over here said about the internet. If there's anything that you can do with Farm Bureau to help you, just let me know. It could be a card before I hit the heat. Uh, the Indiana Farm Bureau has a speed test, and that speed test, it doesn't just measure if you have internet or not, it tells if you have poor, very little, very good. And that really helps with that map, if that's getting ready to decide how much time you're going to get for the state and broad cancer services. So it's really important that everyone doing this speed test as often as you can. Doesn't, it's private, it doesn't give your name and address, you don't have to do it that way, um, but it's very helpful. Um, and if there's anything Indiana Farm Bureau can do for you in your county in the future, please let me know, and I'll put business cards over it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I'm going to bring up with that notification of an opioid settlement. Chad, do you?
I.
Anything ahead to that?
I haven't seen anything other than what you've sent me, but I have seen that the APC's office is behind, but is catching up, and that should be rolling out soon. So keeping tabs on it until you get a little more solid direction on what's winning.
Yeah, the last email I got, they were supposed to be sending money out a week or so ago.
They did.
Seen the money?
I can't tell you, I've got my head, it's less than a hundred thousand, it's twenty-eight or thirty thousand. They've got two different funds, it's restricted and not listed. It should be on your, uh, beginning.
No matter what I did.
It could be, I'm sorry, I'm crazy in the office, so I did not go back from that before. You have your schedule balanced as my phone. It should be on there.
It's coming, yeah. Now for the sad part of the, the day. Sad for me. Anyway, I'd like to present this plaque. Appreciation for dedicated services, Decatur County Highway Superintendent. August twenty-one, nineteen ninety-five to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, Mark Moore.
And Mark, you want to take the picture?
Yeah, pretty well.
Come here first. Thought you could escape, let's see.
Not getting my balls in that now, are you?
No, I got that one time, I don't worry about that.
Not sure of this figure, but I'm, think I'm pretty close. Mark being responsible for, for getting nearly five million dollars from the state of Indiana, the community crossing grant for the Decatur County highways. Here's the box. So we might burn the trash. This next one is even tougher. Nineteen seventy-one. Came to North Decatur as a seventh grader. Watched this guy play basketball, and I'm going to say this because I think he's my friend. They called him Boozer for some reason. I first thought it was Bruiser, but it, it turns out it was Boozer. Kind of Mike, hero growing up. Got a chance to work with him for the last six years as commissioner. Learned a lot. I know he doesn't sit over here and, uh, say a whole lot, but when he says something, uh, it's pretty important. He's done a lot of thinking. Appreciate working with you, I'm going to miss you. Uh, and appreciation for your dedicated services as a Decatur County Commissioner. Presented to Jerome Bunnin, January the first, two thousand and three to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you. Rick, you guys worked with him, Dan and Stay were here.
I just echo your comments, Mark, it's Jerome, it was great for my twelve years sitting behind that desk. But I got to work with you, I got to know you better, and, and I consider you a friend and a good friend, and hope we continue conversations.
Thanks, Rick. Anyone else? Uh, why everyone stick around, we got a cake. To cut up and carve out. If there's nothing else, I would.
No, I got this.
You do?
You said I'll say anything, so I thought.
Can't get in any trouble anymore, I don't think.
Um, no, I just, few random thoughts, I, I'm not much for putting things together really well, particularly, but, uh, and I think I proved that before, and somebody told me that once, they've already known that for a point of years. I couldn't do that, but anyway, uh, you know, so many, so many thank yous to, to go around and, um, you know, you can't, can't get them done here in this short amount of time. Like, there's just so many things in this county that, um, have gone really well, and people contribute to it, the boards. It's amazing how many boards there are that, uh, help facilitate and advise what we do, what council does. I mean, it's just, the county couldn't function without the volunteers that step forward. It's, it's, it's amazing, the number of people in this county that are very, uh, very aggressive and very, in, in a good way. Uh, and really willing to volunteer and, and put their time up, because it does take a lot of time, so really appreciate that, you know. Economic bill, when you talk about counties having resources and things, and, and Decatur County is no different, they have their set of resources. But the biggest resource I see in this county is, uh, the people. It's just, uh, it's just amazing what, what you, uh, see over twenty years and, and how, how people respond to different things and step up and, and take their places to do anything, so really appreciate that. Going back, uh, you know, I started out, uh, Tom Makeade, Charlie Beal, John Richards, uh, you know, they all brought, Charlie and Tom, whoever, when I got here. You know, they all brought their own, uh, little sets of expertise, I suppose, and, uh, you know, Charlie and John just kind of, or Charlie and, uh, Tom, I'm sorry, just kind of, uh, guided me a little bit, just in the ins and outs, never tried to influence anything, and I always appreciated that. Uh, they just, uh, let you find your way, but kind of helped you along with the questions. John came in, of course, he had expertise in the roads and infrastructure, and, you know, that was a, a nice, uh, thing to have to go with us. And then, of course, Rick came on, uh, Rick was more, uh, sort of an out-of-the-box type of thinker, I think. He, uh, found ways to consolidate, or wanted to consolidate offices, ideas for health insurance, I mean, just the whole, whole range of things. You know, just another, another set of eyes on things, that was great. Uh, Chuck comes in, he just dives in with both feet, I appreciate, I've known Chuck for a little while, kind of lost track of him there for a few years after high school, but, uh, it's good to see him back and, and he'll die again. He'll ask, he'll get, try to get answers to questions that maybe, uh, some people don't think to ask. And that, so that's, that's been a real good one. Then you get to Mark. Mark has just been amazing, he's, uh, he's one of the most, or was probably the most hands-on commissioner. I mean, he, if there's a problem out there, he doesn't necessarily call somebody to fix it, he'll, he'll just go fix it himself. Uh, and he's been a really good leader here for the last couple of years, and, uh, really appreciate it. And, uh, but I guess I'm going to assume you're going to run again, I certainly hope you do, uh, the county will do better for it, so. And again, I didn't, you know, I'm not going to thank a lot of people here publicly, but within the commissioners, underneath the commissioners' umbrella, Kenny. He came in when we kind of restructured the area plan office and became our building inspector, reports to the commissioners, whatever, but I think he's done a fabulous job. A really good addition and improvement to the area plan.
Thanks, Joe.
And then, uh, of course, Highway Department, they can make a very good, as a commissioner, and, uh, Mark and Tim Orton, too, kind of assigned the scenes, Tim's a little more behind the scenes, probably, but, uh, both these guys. Mark, you've been amazing, you've just been, you know, you, you do all the nuts and bolts of the job extremely well, you're a great PR person. So I really appreciate all you've done in the last, last twenty years. And I see Todd stepping down, and this really looks like he's going to take this and run with it, and I appreciate that, Todd, I think you're going to do a great job, so. You, you, uh, I wouldn't go get emotional like this, and then, and then these people, yeah. My wife and all my sons and daughter, uh, my two grandchildren. Really, you got family behind you, you can really accomplish a lot, and they've done, uh, really good, really great. And then, you know, a little secret, you guys don't have advantage of this, but for twenty years, um, I've had a little more of a, and maybe as far as things going on in the county, that comes from a person who owns a beauty. Let's see, there's, I wonder if there's something else. You know, there's a hundred things to thank before, and I'm just going to wrap this up, but, uh, every year, every spring, I just have to hold my breath, and then, uh, I'm really thankful for when that tree leaps out and is still alive. Anyway, oh, Jeremy, good luck. Yeah, I, I, if you do a good job, then I know the county will do a good job, so. That's, that's, that's it. Thank you all.
Karen, you didn't say nothing, I know what wives go through being commissioners' wives. When you get those phone calls at ten, eleven o'clock at night.
Yeah.
You're sitting over going, how long is this going to take? We truly do, uh, at, at one time, Gail clocked all mine, all she could, she'd check my cell phone at the end of the day. And, and, you know, we'd get thirty, forty calls per hour. You know, so wives and kids have to put up with all that, and they go to ballgames and, you know, it's a bad mouth when you hear, it's kind of like coach's wife, she had to endure all that, too, when I coached. That's why she sat on the other side of the gym. Wives do endure a lot in this line of work, but Jerome's been fantastic working with, and appreciate everything, and Decatur County does, too. Anyone else? Please stay for the cake. Motion to have recess.
Move to recess.
I'll second that.
Well, move to a trap myself, so.
We're done, thank you all.